Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 22nd meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission. We have a forum. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll? Here.
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 Here. Here. Here. Here.
Thank you. Let's move on to commission member announcements or reports. Are there any? Does staff have anything that they would like to report? No, let's move on to our approval of our September 8, 2016 minutes. We previously received these. Are there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sprague. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? That brings us to cases withdrawn or requests for continuance. There are none, and so we're at our consent agenda. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These items are scheduled before your planning commission, which are being recommended for approval by staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special condition and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask any questions on the case. We have one case on the consent calendar tonight. That is case number one. The project is conditional use permit number four, MAP 201R. The applicant is Granite Construction, Central California Region, and the project is located approximately 12 miles south of the city of Arvin and 25 miles southeast of the city of Bakersfield. The request itself is a conditional use permit to allow for the development of a surface mining and reclamation plan in accordance with the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act of 1975 in conjunction with rock, gravel, sand, concrete aggregate, or soils crushing, processing, or distribution utilizing associated bash plants on approximately 545 acres of a 706 acre property in an A district. The project is proposed, is to be operated in three phases over 40-year project lifespan. Your commission did receive an addendum tonight. The primary purpose of that addendum was to correct a typo in mitigation measure 4.13-3. We are recommending this project stay on the consent calendar, but we do have a revised recommendation. The recommendation at this time is to certify the environmental impact report, adopt the revised Section 15901 findings, and Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt the revised mitigation measure monitoring program, approving conditional use permit subject to recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. That concludes the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have consent agenda item number one pulled from the consent agenda and heard in its regular course during a full public hearing? Seeing none, would any commissioner like to do that?
Nope.
No? Is there any action?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve item one as stated by Steph.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Babcock, second by Commissioner Poole. Will you please? Are we ready for vote? Voting? It's okay.
Should we just do a motion vote? I mean, verbal vote?
We can do a roll call vote.
That's fine.
We'd have to have the Madam Clerk do that as well. Madam Clerk, we could do a roll call vote. Would you like to do that?
Mr. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Thank you. And there is a notice of right to appeal, Mr. Murphy?
There is, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until the final date of the appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available to Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Let's move on to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public presentation? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to our public hearings, and we will begin with public hearing number two. Mr. Denny?
Commissioners, the request before you on item number two tonight is a conditional use permit and a zone variance request. It is essentially a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured home as a secondary residential unit which exceeds the permitted size in conjunction with a zone variance because the proposed manufactured home is not architecturally similar to the house that's presently on site. With me tonight is Angelina Simon with the Advanced Planning Group, and she is going to put, I believe, a site plan up of the project site that shows the existing and proposed development on this site. Essentially, what we have is a parcel that's a little over 2 and 1/4 acres in size. It's Zone D 2 and 1/2 RS. It is, again, it's currently developed with a conventional dwelling. Properties to the northwest and the south are undeveloped, while property to the east does contain a single-family residence. Because the provisions for secondary residential units require that they be... Oh, I see. What's the simplest way of putting it? Well, let's move past this for just a minute because I don't want to convolute it. Because the manufactured home exceeds the size of the requirements of the ordinance, a conditional use permit is required. Staff notes that secondary residential units are actually an allowed use within the E District and other residential districts so long as they adhere to the criteria. Now, in the staff report, there was a reference to the secondary residential development standards. An addendum has been handed out in yellow that actually identifies the criteria. And again, the two criteria that are not met by this particular proposal is the size. It's about 480 square feet, too large, about the size of a two-car garage, and it is architecturally dissimilar. If Ms. Angelina would put up a picture of the existing dwelling... No. There should be an elevation photograph of the existing dwelling that will show you a semi-Spanish-style home with tile roofing. These photographs were included in the staff report. Bear with me for just a moment. In the staff report, there is a photograph of the existing dwelling that shows essentially a Spanish-style home with tile roofing on it. The manufactured home that's proposed is more of a... what's referred to as a hardboard cement siding. It does have the perimeter eaves, and it does have a composition pitched roof. So again, our tile does not match the roofing on the existing dwelling. It also is of a different color, and hence, staff has concluded it is architecturally dissimilar. Ms. Simon has the photograph up of a portion of the dwelling. You can see that. Now, she'll put up the photograph of the manufactured home. I believe we have three. It's kind of a wraparound-type view. You can see it's yellow and white with a pitched roof and a comp shingle. It does not look like the primary dwelling. As such, it's dissimilar, hence the need for the variance. Now, a secondary residential unit may not exceed 1,200 square feet or 50% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. Our principal dwelling is 3,059 square feet. That gives you an approximate square footage that a secondary could be of 1,530. However, that exceeds 1,200 square feet. Our proposed manufactured home is 1,647 square feet, so it is approximately 447 square feet, too large. Staff has reviewed the photographs along with the site plan in conjunction with the development standards, and these are the only two criteria it doesn't meet. If it had met all the criteria, we would not be having a public hearing tonight, and a building permit would have been issued for the secondary residence. In the staff report, on pages two and three, we've identified four cases, either in the forms of conditional use permits or zone variance, where similar approvals have been granted. They range from a size increase of 294 square feet to an increase of 2,000, almost 2,000 square feet in another instance that was approved in 2010. There was a project on page three, the staff report, involving a variance that allowed a secondary residential dwelling that differed in color, roofing, materials used, and various exterior features, similar to what you're considering tonight. So, staff believes there's adequate documentation to support that we're not breaking any new ground here in considering this case. Homes are different, and previous secondary residential units have been approved by your commission that differ from the principal dwelling. Now, prior to 2002, the rules for secondary dwelling units were different. They used to say 900 square feet or 50% of the total, whichever is greater. As such, prior to May of 2002, the county had a number of secondary residential units that exceeded 1,600 square feet. I can personally attest that we probably built them as large as 3,500 square feet for some of the 7,000 square foot homes that we've seen in Kern County. However, those requirements changed, and the current requirements are 1,200 square feet or 50% of the total floor of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. There were comments that were received. Basically, the agencies from Public Works indicated they did not have any essential concerns. Roads Department did indicate that access would be limited to Hosey Avenue. If Ms. Simon would put up the site plan again, we are sitting on a corner lot of Gosford and Hosey, and they want access to be continued to be taken off Hosey. They also want it clear that all easements would need to be kept free and clear, open from any buildings or structures. Should your commission approve the request, these conditions have been included. There was, I believe, four letters or three letters received in opposition from Ramsey and Chrissy Monsur, Nabil Monsur, and Samir Monsur, who basically expressed concern that most of the dwellings in that area were conventionally-built dwellings. They were of a high quality and were intended that way to address the future real estate market, to realize that it was a high preferred country living area. They also expressed concerns that there was development along Hosey Avenue involving four 2 and 1/2 acre parcels that had been done in a manner to create a nuisance. Staff has looked at this. The project site is owned by the applicant. That is the only parcel they own. The other three parcels are owned by family members, and staff has contacted Code of Compliance to investigate the Monsur complaints about public nuisances on the other three properties. However, there are no violations on the current project site that would prevent your commission from looking at this request tonight. Staff reviewed the project with regard to SEQA. There is specifically an exemption, 15303A, that allows for categorical exemption for the consideration of secondary dwelling units, and staff is recommending your commission utilize that should it approve the request in order to make the necessary findings. Pages four and five of the staff report remind your commission of the necessary findings for conditional use permit and a zone variance. And essentially, the request before your commission tonight is to determine whether the 447 square foot increase in size and the architectural dissimilarity between the two dwellings prevents your commission from making the necessary findings. It's as simple as that. Staff has reviewed the findings with regard to the conditional use permit. The Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan provides provisions for a variety of housing types and densities. The E District allows secondary residential units. Residential units are provided in accordance with the California Government Code, and the zoning ordinance allows them as an allowed use, but when they don't meet the criteria, they need either a conditional use permit or zone variance. This represents the applicant's attempt to satisfy the requirements. With regard to the zone variance, staff agrees with the applicant that special circumstances exist applicable to the property based on the existing onsite development, the way the original house was built with its architectural features, such that the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives the property privileges and joined by others in the area. Specifically, we're looking at a rural area that has been built over a variety of time with a variety of housing stock. And the variance for the dissimilarity between the two structures is a comparison between the existing onsite dwelling and the proposed onsite dwelling. It doesn't look at what the adjacent properties are developed with. The proposed mobile home, again, is an allowed use if it wasn't for the existing dwelling, and for all intents and purposes, it may look like some of the other housing stock in the area, but that's not what the variance is intended to address. It's a comparison of the two. Staff believes the necessary findings can be made, so based on the information we have on hand, staff believes that the sufficient information exists in the record to demonstrate compliance with the necessary findings, and recommends that your commission approve the conditional use permit subject to recommended conditions, approve the zone variance subject to recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolutions. This completes staff's presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Staff?
Sure. Mr. Sprague. Commissioner Sprague, excuse me.
Mr. Denny, a couple of questions. Do we have an aerial photograph of this property as well as the residences within, say, a quarter mile of it?
We have an aerial photograph that Ms. Simon has put up. I don't believe... I'm not clear on the scale of whether it reaches a quarter of a mile.
Okay. And which property? Can you point out which property this is? Which project?
That's our existing development with our existing residents.
And so, the house to the right, the front of it looks on to Hosey Road?
Hosey Road runs east and west, directly south of the property. So you'd be looking at property along Gosford? Here's Gosford.
Yeah. Where's Hosey Road?
East and west, right there.
Okay. What I... I don't want to pose a hardship on these people, but where the dwelling, the additional dwelling, is sited? If it were shifted on the plat I'm looking at to the left behind this existing residence to block actually the view from the road, or if it were landscaped there along Gosford view from Gosford into the site, would that help to shield the location? What I'm trying to do is get around the scenario where I understand it's not Spanish-style, but there's probably other houses out there that are in continuity with it just because it's a mobile home type that's probably going to sit on a foundation. I would just wonder if there's a way around the problem?
Well, I believe you're probably looking at a dwelling that's probably going to be about at least 20 feet tall. I could have... I have a representative here from Valley Manufactured Homes that could give you the height of the structure. As far as its foundation system, it is an engineered foundation system. You will not see it. It will be skirted. I'm not sure what kind of landscaping you would put to hide a home. But yes, you could require it, but there is not a development standard to landscape for secondary residential units either.
Okay.
As far as what's on there, if you move it east, if you move it to the left-hand side of the property, it would be further away from Gosford. I could also verify with the applicant's representative whether or not there is a six-foot fence around the property, and whether that fence is a solid fence or chain link or no fence at all, which might provide some screening in and of itself.
Yeah. I'm just kind of looking for a solution, possibly how to shield the secondary residence without having them re-roof it to tile roof to try to look like the other residence, and I don't really think that's necessary, but I'm looking for a solution. I would look for other commissioner comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Is there any other brief questions for Mr. Denny at this point? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public portion of this hearing. Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to make any opening comments? Sir, would you like to make some opening comments? Please feel free to approach the microphone. Can you please state your name for the record?
Angelo Zunino. And I represent Valley Manufactured Homes. This particular home hasn't been built yet. The pictures are the pictures of a model that's on my lot, but she's going to order one exactly like that, so it can be painted to match the house that's there. I don't think that's an issue. The roofing is an architectural shingle, 50-year shingle that can... The one that she looked at has a black roof, architectural roof. I think that stick-built house has a tile roof on it, which I think is red. I'd have to look at the picture again, but I can't remember what the color of it was.
May I ask him a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the applicant a question.
Sure.
Since it hasn't been built yet, sir, is there a possibility that... I know with the new fiberglass shingles that look like tiles, that we could come close to matching what's on the front house, and then if we change the color, since it's going to be manufactured, to come close to the front house, then it kind of blends together, and that might solve the situation? Is that a possibility? That could be done?
Yeah, there's not an architectural shingle that's that color available.
That's tile color or reddish color? There is not?
Right. No.
Okay. So that eliminates that possibility? Okay. What's the height after it's sitting on its foundation?
It's 16'4".
And so, the house is probably about the same? If you're looking from the road, would you see the house and then in back of it, the rooftop of the other one?
You probably would not see the house from Hosey, but you would see it from Gosford.
Okay.
As you're heading from the north, heading south on Gosford, you would see the... You would see this home, and then you would see the stick-built house.
Okay. Right. I was looking for a solution and evidently haven't found it yet, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zunino. Did you have any further comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Okay. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this project? In favor of staff's recommendation? Okay. Seeing none, and Mr. Zunino, it sounds like you're done with your comments, so I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing, return it to the dais. Are there any questions, comments?
I just have a comment to make.
Sure. Sprague?
What I'm trying to accomplish is you've got a residence, according to the aerial map, or several residences there, that could look into this, along with passing cars going north and south, and I was trying to look for a solution that could either change the atmosphere of the look of the secondary residence so it blended more with the primary residence, especially if you've got houses off there to the right of that map, so that they wouldn't be looking at an eyesore, let's say, to speak. And the only way that I can see of doing it now was... would be if they planted more landscape along the Gosford frontage to shield it, but I don't know if the applicants are willing to do that. I certainly don't want to press the issue and cost them more money to putting this in, but again, I'm just trying to accommodate the neighbors also. So those are my comments. I'd listen to other commissioners, or whether they think it's a problem.
Any other comments? Commissioner Babcock?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hearing from the manufacturer, it seems like they can paint the home to match the existing home.
That would help.
And maybe they can find a shingle that's closer in color or that would match better than the black shingle that we see in the photograph. Other than that, as far as landscaping and so forth, that's awful hard to... for me to come up with a recommendation this evening, but I think if we simply have in the conditions that the house will be painted to match the existing and the roof color will architecturally blend with the existing home, I would be comfortable with those conditions. Mr. Chairman, I could agree with that also.
Commissioner Garcia or Commissioner Poole?
Seems reasonable to me. I think provided we draft the condition in such a way... Look, if there... If we... The manufacturer, there isn't a shingle that's going to match perfectly, right? So let's ensure that we write the condition so that there's the flexibility. They can get as close as they can get, basically.
Or acceptable to the planning department.
Something along those lines, I think, would be fine.
And Commissioner Garcia, it looks like you're in the queue.
I'm fine with both of those, the modifications or the... to the recommendation. If you look at the aerial picture again, if... Can we pull that back up? There's other structures with the custom homes in that area that don't match the structure. I mean, we've got a warehouse-type structure that's just to the east. I don't know how important it is that all the structures match. These are custom homes. None of the homes match the other. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with what you're recommending, but I don't think that it's necessary, especially if a shingle can't be found to match the home structure.
Okay.
Well...
You know, I... Go ahead. Commissioner Babcock?
Go ahead.
You know, I voiced... I've said this before in other commission meetings on zone variances, and I'll briefly state it again. It kind of seems like... And I'm not saying that I won't support this because I will, but I just wanted to throw this out there. On zone variances, if you look at the language on our findings that we have to make, it just seems like this isn't an extraordinary enough reason to grant a zone variance. And I've... And we've had issues before where I've voiced my concern on zone variances, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, then I have a question of staff. In the conditions of approval, can we add a condition that says that the manufactured home will be painted to match the existing home? And second...
And secondly, that the color of the roof material of the manufactured home must be approved by the planning department so that it is architecturally acceptable?
Commissioner Babcock through the chair, yes. If you take a look at condition two, at the end of the first sentence where it references the zone district and then spells it out, we could insert a statement that says, if I'm understanding correctly, "The manufactured home exterior and roofing color shall match the primary dwelling to the greatest extent possible."
That works.
We could leave it as simple as that, or we could add a statement afterwards. Color to be approved by the director of the Planning and Natural Resources Department prior to issuance of building permit.
Fine. I think to put a little more weight on it, why don't we add that the planning director must approve the colors?
After we say "to the greatest extent possible," we could say, again, "The director of the planning and community, or Planning and Natural Resources Department to approve color prior to issuance of zone, or issuance of building permit."
Yes.
Would that do it for you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Is that your motion?
That would be my motion, then, to approve with those recommended changes.
There's a, there's a motion by Commissioner Babcock. Now, do we all feel comfortable that we have a full understanding of what that language is, or do we want to have it read into the record again? Is everyone comfortable? Okay, it looks like everyone's comfortable. A motion by Commissioner Babcock, a second by Commissioner Poole, and are we all good, are we ready to go on the electronic vote, or do we need a roll call vote? Roll call?
There it is.
There it is. Please cast your votes.
Oh, it's all yes, sorry. Four yeses, or five yeses.
All yes.
All yes.
Thank you. Okay, and there is a notice of appeal?
There is, Mr. Chairman. Again, for projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until the, after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield with a filing fee of $540 on forms available to Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and that leads us to adjournment. Our next planning commission meeting is Thursday, October 13, 2016, in these board chambers at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.